It's ten o'clock. This is the Gillen County Court's regular meeting, July second. We're hearing Condon today. Meeting's been called to order. A quorum's been established and we need to have the flags look quick this time. I present my wishes to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, are there any additions or revisions to the agenda? Okay. All right, we have correspondence and public comment. Individuals wishing to address the county court may do so at this time and at other times throughout the meeting. Speakers are asked to raise their hand, be recognized by the chair, give their name and city, and limit their comments to three minutes. Catherine Brighter has signed up for a public comment.
Morning.
Morning.
Um, on six point two, you have economic development incentive funding for an IGA with the city of Arlington. And under it, um, one part of, sorry, was it six point three? So, um, one thing I want to make very clear to start off this is that I have several questions about this line item, but I am in favor of all economic development, whether whatever end of the county, whether it's in Condon, Arlington, Lone Rock, Mayville, Micheloe, anywhere, I am in total support. Um, but I do have a couple of questions on that and I can either answer now or when you go over that. But my question one, is this a new program for Gillen County? I also want to know who is eligible to apply for this program? How is this program funded? Are there limits to requests or what dollar amount is available? Can this program be paired with other county grant programs? Are there any follow-up requirements to Gillen County such as project approval of what you have? Quarterly reports, any of that? And also too, it's kind of vague of what fits the definition of economic development for this particular program. Um, I know without, uh, the strategic plan, I'm guessing is still in place, but I don't know if any of, I just need a definition of what is going to be applicable under this particular program? And what is the term of the agreement or length of the program? And the IGA that you have before you today does not state a term. And I know it's up for discussion, but um, those are the questions I have. And so I'll be interested to know because again, um, we have a couple of projects coming up. One is a housing project. The other is we have seven acres of industrial land. But I also want to make sure that Lone Rock and the incorporated areas in the county also have the ability to apply for the funding also. So okay, is it new? I mean, that's my big question. Is this a new program? And is it going to be for everybody?
Thanks. Okay, is there any other public comment? Okay. The treasures report is in your packet. For April of twenty twenty five, are there any questions about that? It's just a.
No, I had, um, I just had that one discussed with you real quick, but that's fine.
Um, Summit Springs capital investment grant request. Hannah Bass, are you online?
I am. I'm here online.
Okay.
Um, I am coming to the court today. Our memory care, um, heating and cooling system has gone completely out. Jameson and Marshall does have us connected with some of their equipment right now to keep the facility cool clearly for the residents. But the whole units are going to have to be replaced and it is a thirty thousand dollar project. So I'm reaching out to the court to see if we can do something with the grant guidelines for the capital investment. I do know it's not open until September, however, we have an immediate need.
Okay. Thank you. Um, one thing that we could discuss is opening up the grant, um, capital investment grant now. So that we can help with this emergency situation.
What was that Brooklyn?
Or find it so they go to your talk. So I'm gonna, everybody, where this class, one-time application.
Right.
Uh, cause when we did our guideline updates, we said, you know, we have a situation that falls outside of the, the two dates that we set, it was September and we were ready to come to the board and ask for these slots.
Okay.
So I think we're, Chris's options were to open that for everybody right now for, I don't know what the thought is there about weeks or
Would they just turn the application into you? Yes. For the grant committee to review it? Um, I'm gonna ask Hannah, how long will your emergency picks that you have right now hold up? I'm just worried about your timeframe.
Um, I would have to speak with Jameson and Marshall. I don't know for sure how long, because it's, I, I believe it's all their equipment. Um, Donald has something going in there just to keep it cool. Um, but you know, it has never been replaced since two thousand and nine when the facility was built. So he said it is just time also, but um, I do have concerns because we're just getting into the heat of the summer. So I, I just want to make sure that we can get this taken care of.
Right. What about going with the emergency, um, application in this one particular case? And, um, fund it pending the application being submitted?
Yeah, I would, I would definitely do that.
Okay, can we, do we feel comfortable going ahead and funding it, um, and not waiting the two weeks?
Well, I, I think that they should still, the grant committee, can, can you get together and review it, rush?
Well, but they're being, I'm not sure, but. I've done in the past, I guess, for you guys to approve of project funding with a grant line item and uh, was this a derangement?
Yeah. So are you comfortable?
It's working currently, right? It just is on a bit far of time.
Yeah.
Okay. But Jameson Marshall have a fix that they have put together for them temporarily.
Okay.
Yeah.
But you still don't know how long that'll last, right Hannah?
I don't, I'm not sure. I'd have to reach out to Donald, um, but he's already been in here Monday morning, first thing and he's getting parts ordered. I mean, we're gonna have to replace it no matter what he says. It's just, um, a matter of funding where we, we're having some issues.
Let's try to make it happen.
Okay. Okay. So we probably need a motion to, um, allow, um, a emergency capital investment grant, um, application in this particular case, if that's how you want to proceed. Um, and then.
Or do we just need to approve it once it's, um?
Yeah. But we hadn't opened up the window because it doesn't actually open until September.
Yeah.
So.
So do we just want to authorize it now and then approve it or?
Whatever you choose.
I, I'm okay with whatever.
Pre-approval vintage and on an application basis.
There you go.
Cause how, how much are they looking at?
Thirty thousand. Is it thirty or below or is it around thirty?
It's exactly thirty thousand dollars. The invoice I have on my desk, um, possibly a few thousand more, but um, it is that thirty thousand dollar threshold for the capital investment.
Okay. All right.
So can we approve it pending the grant committee's review and approval?
Yes.
And that way we won't have to wait till the next court meeting just.
Right.
That would be the best way, I think.
Get it going.
And I'm with Brooklyn and I'll get the application done as soon as possible, whatever we need to do.
Okay, thank you.
I'm moved to do a pre-approval of a, was it the heating and cooling system?
HVAC.
Yes.
Um, for Summit Springs Village, um, pending approval of the grant, the grant committee.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you Hannah.
Thank you.
Okay, the consent agenda includes, um, approval of regular meeting minutes and, um, bills pending revision twenty twenty five. Are there any questions about the consent agenda?
I don't have any. Do you have any?
No. Okay.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, consider approval of fiscal year twenty-six operational support for North Gillen County Health District. Would you like to come up? For whoever is speaking for the health district?
Um, I have to declare a potential conflict of interests and abstain from voting.
Okay. All right.
So not much has changed as far as, um, the initial ask of the three hundred and five thousand, um, operational support grant that was submitted on May second, uh, was just temporary ask to be placed on hold, which we did that, we thought was on May twenty first. Uh, it looks like we, the board, would like to move forward in, um, hoping that the operational grant at this time can be put through. Uh, so what I would like to share is yes, we are seeking all this support of three hundred and five thousand dollars for this fiscal year that just started July one. The operational grant will enable the district to continue providing the vital twenty-four seven staffing for our emergency services department and of course the primary care clinic. The operational grant for the health organization will, um, ensure that emergency medical services and primary care services continue to take place. Uh, and we know that in rural, those services are very much needed with the support of the organizational, um, brand, uh, we can continue providing all these services. And ongoing modernization, leadership, governance and program implementation should reinforce the high quality of care we currently offer and continue to offer the, this will enhance the well-being of the community at large and we are diligently strive to improve the vital services that North Gillen County Health Districts and med and clinics, um, departments provide to the district. Focusing on sustainability and optimal patient care, uh, always remains our priority. We, um, have experienced a shortfall in the fiscal year twenty twenty.
I'm gonna stop you for a moment. We shut that door. Hearing some background noise to make sure we can focus on what you say. Thank you.
But I think, um, so what we've experienced in our shortfall of income, which is leading us to, um, the ask is, uh, the sundown of the two thousand and nine strategic investment program, which was, uh, happened in twenty twenty-four. And of course that was the Leaning Jupiter, the Willow Creek and the Pebble Springs for a total of, uh, that was about eighty, well over eighty-four thousand dollars that we did not receive in income that we were anticipating.
Doesn't that roll into property taxes?
It will roll into property taxes, uh, that should be healing us this year.
Right.
Is how I understand it with the research that I did. So, and then with that, of course, uh, the little over fifty-eight thousand, about fifty-nine thousand that, that, uh, is just being held potentially due to the appeal that's taking place for Pacific Core and Avon Grid. So that decreased our, um, income of about fifty-nine thousand. And then we, um, did experience a shortfall in income, but that situation has been rectified. And in, in improving that, that to get the income back up where it needs to be, the district, um, has made, uh, changes and puts safeguards in place to ensure that billing and proper protocols will be met. Plus in addition to that, um, are going to be increasing, uh, training for the community. So that's another source of income when it comes to ACLS and BLS. Training being offered to, uh, other businesses here in the whole county. And we are, as far as the rural health clinic, the clinic is striving to become a rural health clinic. At this, uh, time, it should be December of twenty twenty-five that the clinic will reach their CMS federal certification to become an RHC. Every clinic around us is an RHC currently. Yeah, and what that means to us is those Medicare dollars will basically double in revenue of what we are currently receiving. So I think that we have things in place to help our income grow. Uh, this is the first time that the health district has asked for any operational support to the county. And I am here today to, I know we've asked to be placed on hold and now I'm back asking that we're, we're ready to move forward in hopes that that can happen.
Do you have questions?
Yeah, so I was just curious, um, you know, you have in your thing that you have the budget shortfall was two hundred and thirty-six thousand. So what, what's the additional amount for?
Additional monies?
Yeah.
We, um, in looking at where we, what we're eligible for, I believe the, and, and working in that process and coming up with that number, I think it came to two hundred and thirty-six thousand is what our shortfall was. But looking at increases coming for the year and, and percentage increases that are taking place, whether it comes to be under the lines of fueling, um, electricity, all those things that tend to increase annually to support a business?
Well, I just, cause I was just curious if any of that, cause you got the three special projects.
So I didn't know if any of those were, um, money to you or? The special projects grants have to do with improving the EMS, uh, quarters, the one, uh, so that we can change our structure, how it's set up, uh, currently set up so that we can house people to be there twenty-four seven. Then there is, that was one of the special project grants. The other one was, um, to purchase two CAD systems. So there'll be a CAD system in each ambulance. And then the additional special, special projects grant is for the rural health certification. Uh, that fee to pay for the process of getting us instead of it taking three years to get there, working with the company to help get us there sooner and within six to nine months. And we have started that process, being the health services associates.
Okay. We met with you.
Yeah.
With the, the grant committee and, and I went, we met with you and, and we went over questions such as your walk-ins. How are you gonna get that increased, um, so that your operations, um, so we don't end up here, um?
Every year.
Every year. Because you know, we, we all know that North Health receives a significant amount in, in property taxes. Um, but you have the absolute right to apply, just like everyone else does. Um, but it did make me look at, um, you know, both clinics we have and see how, um, how the numbers work for them and what you're going to be doing to, um, market what you're doing so that um, your taxes and your clientele are supporting your business, the business end of what you're doing.
So, um, one of the things over the years, uh, I did not bring that up, but, uh, we have been, uh, recording every month, the amount of services, the patient count, what services are being provided. Um, thanks to Benny when he was on our ward saying, show us the numbers. I want to see your numbers. I want to see your productivity. Um, and so that has continued. Uh, with that, that there has been every year a significant increase in the numbers of patients that are seen at the clinic. Um, as well as, um, the other additional services that are there that weren't there before. In a primary care clinic, typical things that should be happening that weren't happening in the past that have also helped increase the numbers that we are seeing now have to do with doing your annual, uh, welcome to Medicare visits, doing, so you have your, when you turn sixty-five, your annual Medicare visit that needs to take place within the first twelve months. After that, it's a subsequent visit that's there for every year additionally. Uh, so that's something that's continued. Or been emphasized and grown that wasn't there in the past. Another area that that has also taken place is for just your annual wellness visits for the commercial insurance, whether it is focusing on women or men, but the over, overall really focusing on those preventative services that need to be taking place on an annual basis. Uh, really tracking your diabetics, uh, making sure that your uncontrolled diabetics are being seen every three months instead of every six months. Uh, which is increasing and it's not about just having them come in because we need to increase the numbers. It's about providing better quality of care and helping them, um, control their diabetes and keep it under control. Then you also have hypertension. So we have hypertension, uh, people with hypertension and tracking those patients and having them come in um, more regularly and screening them on a weekly basis, same with our INRs. Um, I think I've definitely seen a significant amount of numbers in office visits. Of course, another reason why is because Dr. McClellan is there. Uh, Dr. McClellan is there on Mondays and Tuesdays and Joyce is there on Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays. Uh, they are two separate providers, but one FTE.
All right.
Okay. So just, I wanted to ask you, what, what did they put in place to help with the, um, billing?
Um, so.
Wasn't being done before?
Well, probably on that one situation to basically make sure that they are being reported and there are two, two people's eyes that are looking at what's being reported, making sure that it is being turned in. Uh, the other piece of that is then the report is turned in and then I receive something from quarterly. I don't, my report only comes quarterly. So I get to map quarterly what was billed versus, um, you know, that we, services that we said we provided. Another thing that's been added is that, um, Stacy, the EMS director, has been able to bring training in to teach them, um, areas that they can train and provide additional training. And so they've learned in other areas that maybe hasn't been being built in the past that they could have been.
So are you caught up on the billing? So, so for last fiscal year, you would have needed to just, this is on that EMS side. So have you received what you budgeted? Yeah. For, on the EMS side and how short were you, are you?
Um, or if you don't, you may not have. I have that right here. So I can tell you that, uh, budgeted last year from the EMS side was sixty thousand dollars. Uh, the previous year before that, we budgeted eighty-five thousand dollars. And the year before that, I believe it was seventy thousand dollars. This year, uh, for the current fiscal year that just ended June thirtieth, uh, they received thirty-nine thousand.
Okay, that's a good, good.
They were closer.
I mean, considering.
Uh, and, and so, you know, those.
I think that, but you're throwing out budgeted figures and what?
No, and so I'm saying what was budgeted was sixty thousand dollars for this fiscal year that ended two days ago and they received thirty-nine thousand of that.
Okay.
And that.
They're showing twenty.
And so that's obviously the area that was affected by, um, a shortage of income there. When you look at billing and what can be billed, there's timely filing. So you can have your date of service, something that, um, doesn't matter what service it is, whether it's on the EMS side or the clinic side. Uh, you only have a certain time that you're allowed for, for past timely filing and then after that it's unbilled.
Right. So then on the clinic side, are you on budget for, did you receive what you budgeted on the?
So on the clinic side, the clinic was budgeted to make, I believe it was eighty-five thousand and we're at a hundred and seven thousand and something.
Okay. All right.
We have exceeded a budgeted amount for the last three years on the clinic side.
Okay, all right.
So.
Do you think your staffing levels are appropriate for your income?
Well, you can look at, um, I will be honest, I don't think I can really speak in EMS, since I don't, I only have a bit of accounts payable, those accounts receivable and payable for that side. Uh, what I can speak to from what I talked about, the clinic. Uh, when I started at the clinic in twenty twenty-two, prior to that, I believe there were a total of eight people on payroll for the clinic before I arrived. And we've been keeping it right at, well, there's four.
Four?
I say four, there's five people, but out of those five, two are one FTE. And for all the requirements of what is needed to, uh, meet the benchmarks that are required for additional funding from not only, uh, Medicare, but Medicaid, there are certain things that need to be tracked. There are, there's the component and it's not just this clinic, it's every clinic. On closed loop referrals, whether it has to do with labs, whether it has to do with referrals out there. There's additional pieces that are part of that. There's, so in primary care, when I look at the numbers that we have, I don't know how we can do more with less people or do the same with less people.
And I do know in the future, when the shepherd's flat, when project rolls off of, of SIP, you're going to be a recipient of the tax revenue when that happens. So that's going to resolve some of it, probably. I, I, I try to be cautious about that. Um, you can always check with the Gillen County assessor on any projections on that. Um, but that'll be a few years.
Yeah, they're still not sure what that's gonna look like yet, so.
So what is the board situation currently?
Well, uh, currently the board situation, in my personal opinion, isn't good. Um, we had three, one month, one resigned and then the next last month, two resigned, so simultaneously. And I don't really have much of a comment to say to that because I'm not a part of the why or what went down.
So are they gonna have to come to us and, um, to get a third, to get a quorum?
Well, I looked up that law and, uh, I was under that impression too. And I read about that and it comes to a certain point that yes, they should go to the court to do so, but then there's another, uh, clause in it that says that whoever the board member is, um, can appoint.
Oh. Our legal counsel also has looked into that too, and we have, uh, voted in position that will be sworn in. And that'll make a quorum. And then we have it advertised for people to put their name in and, uh, I, I don't think it'll come to the court, but I think that within the next week, week and a half, we'll have a full board again.
We have, um, so we have Brian Felt that will be sworn in and that's probably taking place next week. So that gives us, uh, two. And apparently when you have a board of five in a situation like this, apparently two is a quorum. I was surprised about that, but.
Yes, yeah.
Interesting.
Like, he looked into that, so.
Hmm, and that was one of my conversations with.
Okay.
As well.
Is this anticipated to be a one-time request? Just wondering about the future of.
So, um, on my behalf, that's how I look at it. To me, it's a one-time, uh, request.
Okay.
Because of, of what took place this year.
Okay.
The district hasn't in the past. Now I look at the revenue, what's going to be changing and taking place at the EMS department? What's going to be happening with the, uh, additional income of the clinic? The only thing that could change that is, um, something to adjust.
Okay.
Or, oh, we're gonna double these wages. You're gonna get, you know.
Okay.
Cause your certification, that's at least double, correct? Yeah.
And that should be in December.
So that's when the certification is, is received. And then from that point on, then we then will be going under an RHC, which changes the reenter. We then will be going under our R H C, which changes the reimbursement.
Okay.
So instead of with Medicare currently getting forty-five dollars for a visit, it's gonna be a hundred and thirty-nine dollars for a visit.
Hmm, okay.
So I would just say, I'm I'm part of the ambulance and con and I'm passionate about the public health, so I. You know, I think that the healthcare and the EMS is important to our whole county.
I agree.
So um.
I also think sorry to interrupt it, also in Arlington, it's because of the freeway, it's really important um. On the EMS side as well.
Yeah, we're down to.
Well, and I just sat through the middle of a wreck yesterday, so it's like. Things can, I mean, they were lucky that nobody was hurt in that, but.
Yeah.
So um I I just would hope that we ensure that in the future that. You know, that that like the ambulance billings don't get dropped and.
Yeah.
The board be vigilant. I don't know if they get reports every month that they.
They do and have been getting reports every month um on callouts. Uh that's been going on for quite some time and they can see. There's a billing company that the EMS department uses and so.
They've got to enter the run reports.
I think they have a good.
And they. And they do and they will and I think us um. I think Stacy do a fine job down there.
Uh huh, yeah.
Yeah, the challenge, we're down to about five people on the EMS side as well. And we've been having to hire people for two or three years to try to come in and help fill voids.
So people have been scheduled to come in on weekends to cover the one that hasn't been somebody able to cover. And that's been happening for a couple of years now.
And and just, you know, looking in, I think we're close to being to being done, but just looking over your your finances and. It just looked like there was a eating into the cash reserves that caused some of this too. I don't know if I'm interpreting it correctly. Expenses outweighed revenue.
Um I wouldn't say that, so if we wanna speak to what we spent um at the clinic, um how we just shared that information. Uh there was the old board room and a catch-all room and the old chart room. That was um remodeled in. Two years ago, maybe two and a half years ago, that was at a cost of thirty-seven thousand dollars. And then. One of the requirements to become an R H C is that you can't have rips in your carpet, gouges in your walls. Paint being chipped off the wall, things had to be um. Cleaned up.
Okay.
So obviously the carpet, there hadn't been anything done at that clinic. Since I, in everything I could find, since uh the Carmen Bronquist was there.
Uh huh.
And so I think she left, I'm gonna guess sometime, maybe two thousand thirteen, could have been twelve, I don't really know. I can share that she. With what was there, nothing had been done and I did come on board in May of twenty-two and. And working with the Oregon R H C and learning how that could really benefit a rural community uh income-wise. And offer more support, uh knowing that that was one of the areas that needed to be uh taken care of, so. Uh fifty-eight thousand dollars was spent to. Renovate and I say new flooring and paint, a facelift, uh and. On the clinic side, so the exam rooms, the the whole, the whole area. So yeah, there's been some uh money spent there uh over the last few years. Um but you know, we've also uh spent money, we've purchased three ambulances in the last three years. Or or not three years, it's two thousand fourteen.
Okay.
Two thousand fourteen, we purchased an ambulance, two thousand eighteen, we purchased an ambulance, and two thousand twenty-four, we purchased an ambulance.
And those were all on your own expense.
So at the last one, um we we purchased and we took out a loan.
Oh.
And was a loan additionally for when I uh walked on board and that loan has been paid off since I've been there.
Okay.
And we've done some renovations down there, we put in a in the EMS department, uh money was spent talking about. Tapping into our reserve, so money was spent to put in a. Uh a shower and bathroom so that they could shower down there after a run. Means I don't really remember the amount of that.
Okay, that's fine.
I know about fourteen thousand five hundred dollars was spent on a new stairway. Uh with railing so that they get access up above and use that for storage. Um so yeah, we have, we have spent some money.
Okay.
But I don't think that it's been. Excessive in in the, if you look at the time of. What's been done and what's not been done, you look at that whole picture.
Okay, alright, um.
Sorry, I have a question. How did you guys approve your FY one-six budget?
Um it was uh presented at.
What was your total total fund that you guys adopted for your?
Two million fifty-five.
And was that fully from your guys' reserve? When we were there, you had the revenue.
Yeah.
And I was moving that over.
And that you guys have adopted or did you have this?
They get a resolution and run it over.
Okay, um I do want to just, one point of clarification, when the SIP runs in, the very next year, you're getting taxed, there's no gap in time, so again.
Done some research.
Yeah, because they're very helpful at the assessor's office to help you understand, it's very, it's hard to understand and I know it's.
It's a learning.
Boring. Have had to do it myself, so I understand that, so, but you did bring up the the appeal issue, so yes, um. That is a contributing factor, um but I just wanna make sure you were clear that. Loss of SIP doesn't mean loss of revenue.
It will circle back around, it just, that's the year that it hit with two other things. Kind of we did.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Motion Watkins, do you have any?
Yeah, I don't have any. Um so I think Brooke said there's a hundred and something left in the operational.
We kept it at that a million dollar cap, but what we've already funded, the amount that remains, the amount of dollars is a hundred million.
So the additional would need to come out, the additional two hundred thousand would need to come out of the capital.
Capital. Okay, yeah, so it's gonna go down and we need to make sure the public's aware aware of that too. We may not use it all. But it's there for um for those types of projects, so.
Well, I want the, you know, your clinic and the ambulance service to be healthy, so um. Um I'm moved to approve the recommendation that the grant committee made of three hundred and five thousand. For the North um Gillum Health District.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion?
Nope.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
Hi.
Thank you.
For having been, so I just wanted to remind us. That anyway.
Yes.
I just wanted to remind us that um the clinic fulfills the health district's mandate. In and of itself. The ambulance service that we provide has been elected.
Yes.
They do not. The county, with all upon account.
Exactly.
And given the increased cost of the apparatus. And of labor. And I don't know what the situation is the same in South for house time, uh Commissioner Watkins does know. Uh but it seems to me, now the county might want to be centralized.
Yeah.
Go to district where they're providing a service.
Yeah.
That would otherwise all upon account.
That's true. Thank you, yes, clinic's very important and very important in rural communities, um it's their lifeline and so. We understand that, also the ambulance, which is very different service on the north and the south end of the county because of. The demographics, the way the land lays, you know, Conne's landlocked and and then you have a a freeway in Arlington, you have industry in Arlington. So it's very, it's.
We have long transport times.
Yes.
And you can weather.
And not, no good way out of Conne.
They're both important and. You, but you can't sit and look at a back sheet and go. So I appreciate what you have to say, because it's very true and real, you can't look at a sheet and go. Oh, well, this department needs this much money and this department needs this, because they're. Total two different baskets, the the services provided over here versus. Versus these emergency services, they are light years apart. Both yet essential.
Well, but I would say they're interconnected too, because I would tell you in in our, on the South County. If we didn't have a clinic that people that didn't feel well could walk into and see the P A's. We'd be transporting everybody out and then our ambulance system would be overwhelmed.
Yes, very true, very true, I agree.
And we also have Summit Springs Village, which is a link, they have to have the healthcare for that facility too, so. We understand countywide that it's very, very important, um.
It's getting tough to cover those services with just volunteers as we.
Incentivize.
Yeah.
He said, but we have to do our due diligence when grant request comes through and ask questions and make fair decisions.
Well, and I think that it's only the right thing to do to ask questions, it's the only right thing to do to dig in. If we don't ask questions, then we all sit back and just think this, a certain thing is taking place and most of the time, it's not. It's, so it's like giving the opportunity to look at the whole picture and see. Why we are where we are, why we need to be where we need to be, and what changes we need to make, and I think that we're doing it.
I encourage any incentive id- incentive ideas as well for for A M S, um. Yeah, it does fall on us if it falls apart, we don't want want it to.
Oh yeah, we'd be paying for somebody to come up here.
Yes, so ideas, before we have a problem, is when we need to start talking about them.
There was a time, some of you will remember, when the health district did not provide ambulance service.
Uh huh.
It was a real scramble at county court as.
Yes.
Boy, it was gonna be filled.
Right.
We covered it from Conne, from Boardman.
For a while, the fire department took it for a while and then it came back to.
Well, I don't know about the fire department, but I know that we. Ran forth, we went down there, because a lot of times we got turned around and we get halfway there and turn us around.
Thank you. Thank you. I guess, I just wanna clarify that we voted, I wanna clarify that we voted, okay, because immediately there was a question right after.
I make the motion, you say.
I know I seconded it, but it was the vote, the word itself.
I instead of the three hundred and five, the grant committee ran amended.
Yes, yes.
Correct, it was the full fund. Oh, sorry.
Everyone else ended up being full funded, there remember the recommendation was that everybody take a percentage cut. And then we're gonna end up going.
Change that now, because your question was to approve the grant committee recommendation.
But I said the amount, when we didn't say the three hundred and five thousand.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I, okay, so. I I'm gonna rescind the last.
Motion.
Okay, motion's rescinded.
She said three hundred and five.
Now I'm gonna, I thought I did, but that's okay, um. I move to approve the uh. The grant amount of three hundred and five thousand dollars to the North Gillum Health District. And for operational and additional funds from the capital projects.
Okay, I will second the motion, any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
I.
I. Motion carries.
Okay.
Thank you.
I thought you said the amount.
Okay. We needed that clarification anyway, alright. Update on for the brain lab. Okay, so this has been a big undertaking, it's been actually quite enjoyable in parts. To to uh everybody work together on this, um we're still awaiting the release of covenant from the federal government and we're told that. Everything's there, all the documents are. Virtually approved, it's just a matter of waiting and because of changes in the federal government, there's been some some delay in just getting that release. Um O S U extent, we have everything surplus, O S U extension came and looked yesterday, um. O S U. It was the uh not extension.
The science department from Corales.
From Corales themselves came, they got held up behind the wreck that happened and had to go the long way around, but they came and. Purchased quite a few items and um are coming back for more, so and we're able to identify a lot of what was there. So we have a good uh momentum going on getting everything removed. Jordan Haley is going to be coming to get his wheat uh that he wants, um he's been working with um Daryl. On that and once that's removed from the Conex box, then we can move anything else into the Conex box that might. Be remaining before we decide what we're gonna do with the rest of it, um but we have a good, a good response and then we can market it. The one thing I wanna, um we touched on this, is are we comfortable running fiber around five thousand dollars? I think it's, in my opinion, gonna help with marketing, fiber's close, um are we comfortable with pursuing that?
I I think we need it there.
Okay, me too, alright, we will pursue that then. And then we can start advertising, um advertising that's available for rent, which is that released from the federal government. It's clean, cleaned out, it's been, um it it looks pretty good, actually, repairs have been made. Um, yeah. So I wanted to give you that update, okay, new business, consider approval of Murray's Foundation System Installation, Dara Hotel. Gillum County Maintenance.
Martin. Good morning, I'm Dara Hotel, I'm the facilities director and I don't have the original letter from Murray's, but. Previously had a letter from him, having. Questions and some worries about their their leaking problem, next to a bus barn or about twenty feet from a bus barn. Uh so um I went ahead and uh. Took charge and tried to um figure out a plan uh to see what's applicable for both of us. And if it's our responsibility or theirs, um I contacted uh TerraFirma, which is a professional company that came out of band. For no charge, to see what they could do with the problem, the letter that they gave me after the inspection and writing everything up was that. After inspecting the entire building, it is clear that the age of the structure is the primary cause for water intrusion. However, the soil that had settled around the building were doing a good job of directing water away from the structure towards recent construction. Which is our construction, once the land was excavated, worked on and backfilled, new routes for water found their way toward the building, resulting in a problem chain. So I talked to John Murray and the total project um minus the electrician and the south pump that he. Says he would pay for is around fifteen thousand dollars and uh we felt it was a. It would be a good agreement if we were to pay the down payment, which is half, uh just seven thousand six hundred forty-five dollars in forfeits. And he would take care of the additional costs and.
And that would be our only ability.
That would be our only ability.
It's the half.
Yes.
Any questions?
I didn't want to speak for the court, but I told them that's what I would bring to the court.
Letter.
Thought it was reasonable. Give the court that.
So we have something behind it, is that right?
Yeah, it's behind it, it's the it's the bus barn, um building that they're currently using.
Yeah, okay.
What Terraform is doing is basically it's a vapor lock system to create a gutter system, but on the inside of the building. Um that connects to a south pump that goes into the city drainage, so they have the problems.
This has been kind of ongoing also, it's happened several times, I guess, or some.
Yeah, there's been fixes.
The um, the current manager's been there twenty-four years and she said it's really. Only been bad the last four or five years, which corresponded with what we did in construction, so. But it's also getting older building.
And we have some rainy weather too, so.
But not a lot of snowpack.
I think it's good to be neighbors, I. I do too, I would be open to the family.
Take that at discretionary or?
Yeah, we can take that at capital projects.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, I'm I'm good with that.
So the total was seven thousand six hundred forty-five dollars and four cents.
Okay, so do we have? Seven thousand six hundred forty-five dollars and four cents, correct? Whenever you're ready.
I move to approve the TerraFirm Foundation System Proposal. As presented and the county will pay the deposit amount of seven thousand six forty-five oh four.
It's been moved and seconded, um certainly discussion. On favor? Motion carries, thank you, thank you for your work. Permanently resolved.
Thanks for working on that.
Thank you. Okay, consider approval of road use access agreement with Port of Arlington, Amazon. So was was provided um a agreement by Jed with the Port of Arlington. Um to um forward to our legal counsel and. As you see in the briefing, the property recently acquired by Amazon from the Port of Arlington does not have direct access to a public right of way despite there being. Being an existing road on the north side of the property, the buyer needs an easement to be granted in order to have access to the property. Um our attorney has reviewed it and has provided a. The his version of the agreement um within your packet, um is Jed on the line perhaps? No, oh yes, okay, did you have anything to add to that from the Port of Arlington?
No, I don't have any to add other than the. The property is now owned by Amazon and so the port would not be a party to this access agreement. But would be needed for this uh transaction to be be completed.
Okay, so um pending Amazon's approval, because they haven't seen the changes yet that the attorney provided. Are we comfortable approving pending um subject to final legal revisions?
So so it's just actually on the the road itself, it's just the.
Yeah, there's a map.
And then they they own this now. Yeah, you guys just have property on the north side, correct Jed?
What we have left is on the north side, yes, but that thirty acre chunk that Amazon purchased. Uh needs needs proper access.
And you said that there there it has to go back to Amazon's.
Yeah, we're gonna submit it, say this is our legally reviewed agreement and see what they say.
So should we table this until? Reviewing it.
Yeah, we could do that.
There could be a lot more to happen. Yeah, they might not.
Is this is this uh what's the timeframe, is there any um urgency? Do you know?
I I know that they wanted to get it underway promptly. Investment decisions there.
Alright, so they'll probably be motivated to get to get this resolved, so we're we'll send it on and um maybe we already have. And so are you saying Jed to not communicate with you on this anymore, go directly to Amazon?
Yeah, that would be appropriate, yes.
Okay, alright, we will send it on if we have not already done so, thank you. And then do you do you have um, can you provide us with your contacts so we make sure it doesn't get stuck in someone's? Inbox, um so we make sure it does get to the right in the right hands?
Ye- yes, absolutely.
Thank you, so we will table this and it will be forwarded on to Amazon for final approval of the county court um at a later date. Thank you. Next point three is. An intergovernmental agreement proposal by the City of Arlington. To utilize economic development funds um to incentivize development of a property. So as you see, um and I don't know, is there anyone from the City of Arlington on the line?
So is our legal counsel looked at this?
No, they need to look at this if we're going to proceed, but I wanted you to see it first. The one thing I wondered about it is um insurance and. You know, any any liability that I I guess if we're going to be doing something like this, I want to make sure that we don't have any. It's just an idea, it's a concept, I think, um allow the City of Arlington to to. Speak to us if they would like to.
I think that Catherine brought up some good points about, you know, is this a program, are we gonna? Put a mine item in the budget that, you know, can promote the housing. In Gillum County.
With both cities, all three cities actually, yeah. I. You know, I don't like the idea of of doing something like this countywide, we have in the budget. In in, you know, I we hear talk of we have the Economic Development Fund, we need to spend it, we need to utilize it, we need to invest it. And find ways to do so, um so.
Eleven million unappropriates.
So with some of the housing projects they've done before.
Right, and the, yes, but also the Pioneer um CDC, we have the agreement with them. And we have given them money for housing.
Yeah, cuz I thought like in Arlington, they built a couple, or there was some incentive.
From my understanding, Judge Patnod, our president Ball had spoken to you about the idea. And so that's how she is, why it came about, cuz. Incentive for when a developer buys our commercial property downtown, that we can write them. An incentive to build there, they can't use the money to purchase the property, but then they can use this money. Towards what they uh are building, and when we are selling that property, it's gonna be pretty stipulated about what they can build there, that it benefits Arlington in a whole.
So is it workforce housing, I mean, is that the proposal?
We're looking for either a business that will help up. Downtown or some sort of apartments or townhomes that are rentals, but we don't want to run rentals as a city. So we would like a developer to do it, and so that's why we're coming for an IGA to offer them an incentive to build there with a big stipulation of. Having to build right away and not just sitting on our commercial property and letting and nothing happening there. Uh and they don't get any money until they start start building it, and I think that could be worked out too that. Until maybe receipts come in and it's reimbursement rate or I'm not sure exactly what. I can't remember exactly the exact details in our IGA, if that was even stipulated that in there, um but it's a starting point to give to you guys. Based off of that, whatever conversation you and President Ball had.
Yeah, she just proposed this and an IGA came forth as a draft and here we are, so. But I did talk with her about um the Economic Enhancement Ordinance, because we have twenty percent, twenty point five percent. That goes into economic development that we are under utilizing.
Yes, and so our thoughts like, every time we have a town hall meeting or any kind of city meeting, laundromat gets brought up. We don't have a laundromat, the closest one is in Fordman, and every function we have, laundromats are mentioned, so maybe available to put that on a property or some sort of rental housing. Or a competitive hotel or. Another business for the the citizens to utilize. More than one thing that they develop there, just things that the town needs and the fact that they cannot sit on the property.
Right, so if if we. An incentive. And I do think that Catherine brings up a good point, you know, if we're gonna do something like this, is it available to all both other cities? And if we did it, um we could set an amount. And I just, you know, yes, I I think that Commissioner Watkins is right, there is some underutilized. Funds in the economic development. Money that we receive from waste management that we need to put to work. And if we did that, could we set a two hundred thousand dollar cap? Come to an agreement with the City of Condon, come to the agreement with the City of Lone Rock, come to an agreement with the City of Arlington. For this year and then each year reevaluate what that might be.
So these IDAs have never been done before?
There's been agreements with Pioneer CDC, with uh MOU, with the Chamber of Commerce, all of this. Is driven by agreements to disturb first the money, so like the business development line item, that goes to the Chamber of Commerce through an agreement with this. It's just passed through, so this would be similar to that.
Because between the um your workforce housing development at eight percent and then your economic development line. That's twenty-eight percent. Four million and something, whatever, what is it, Brooke, is the economic development? That also covers our our grant program?
No, Economic Development Fund is completely separate and there's. It just goes into a line item and and other. Project development costs of three point five million dollars is what was budgeted.
According to my math, that's one point two million.
So there's three point, yeah, there's.
That could be put into.
Yeah, and I just think.
Yeah, we just um actually, we're meeting next, the council is approving the final flat development tonight, we've got a hundred thousand dollar grant. From State of Oregon to subdivide it, go through planning, surveying, and getting the original. That, but we already got grants from you guys in the county and. To get the infrastructure to the line of the subdivision and then um. After we get subdivided, then they'll decide how they want to sell lots, if we want to do something like a baseball field where we. Have some more um covenants on how it could be done. I mean, so.
But it sounds like according to this thing from Arlington, it's more like given incentives for people to come in and. I think which would be different than what you guys got with the infrastructure and stuff.
Our incentive was, we have the infrastructure there and we sold the lots for a little bit cheap. That they had to build within a couple years, so they would go on.
So so if we made it general, a general incentive so that you could tailor however you want to. Incentivize the this uh uh opportunity for development.
I'm all for the economic development, but I'm wondering. Obviously, I don't want to dictate what Arlington does or Lone Rock does or things like that. I think it's awfully vague right now of how how it works, and I just need to be tight enough like terms and things like that. I think incentives for businesses often, because again, the City of Condon has some industrial lands that. Hopefully we'll work for the pork and work through some incentives on that, I'm wondering if the incentives. Need to go through. I'm also thinking two hundred thousand dollars even more. It's not a lot to incentivize.
Well, no, but I'm thinking this year to get through, to make it fair, to bring up to right to address your concerns and to get this taken care of. This year and then reevaluate next budget year.
Yeah, the project development cost will be about three or four point five.
Well, I think the big thing too is, like I say, this is kind of a time of an essence too, because we're so short. Of development up there, with everything that coming in, it's like. I understand some of your concerns and they're valid concerns, but it's it's the same time, I I I don't know. What's the best way to do this, just kind of case by case right now, I mean.
Make the same offer to the city and they propose something to us, if it happens during this budget year. And then um it needs to go to legal counsel. It sounds like from Kayla, it could be either. But the line item says economic development. Say it again.
This property that we're looking at to to put it with is zone commercial.
Oh, okay. Yeah, but it's a different, we have an agreement with Pioneer CDC for, you know, some some of these other. So there's other. Oh, it would be for the city though, yeah.
I I guess this is another example too of, I would like to see us try to come up in some way to where. We just delegate so much money to the entities and. Let them deal with this, I mean, it's 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 uh.
I know, but you're talking, I mean, we're you're talking about substantially more money with this than you are with that. Small business.
Probably would have more cost of money, I guess.
Oh, the cities, yeah. I see what you're saying.
My only concern is, and I'm looking out for Arlington, that if their developer doesn't need all the two hundred you've now tied it to one. So if if you're going to, and City of Arlington only uses a hundred thousand to to entice this development.
Right. Yeah.
So that if they have another property.
Well, I know, but I mean, it's like, we keep
Yeah.
expanding and trying to write things and it's it's a it's an incentive for somebody to come in and get something going uh because of the shortage.
I agree, but what I'm saying is this is tying Arlington with one.
Yeah, and all you'd have to do is take the legal description out and say any available property.
And have it.
Mm hmm. Yeah, because who knows? That's that's a good point.
Like a generic economic development actually, the the
Yeah, and I I mean, I don't think it's far off to just say there's something for the cities to make their own choices. Here here's a way for the cities to make their own choices and here's some there's some funding that goes with that, because I just I just noticed in going through the budget that you're right, there's money in the economic enhancement ordinance that isn't put to work that we could put to work.
I know, it's just built in, built in, built, built.
Yeah, like some of it though is the homestead rebate endowment, you know.
But no, it's in its own thing.
Okay.
No, because the eleven million of
Well, there you go. What if we just did that?
If you up the percentage, you now giving us economic development money instead of having to
Currently, the ordinance has six percent for Arlington, six percent for Condon and point five percent for the City of Lone Rock. And this is just money that's given to them as part of the
I mean, we're not found, we have a contract. I mean, obviously, just for economic.
And it's the one you're you choose to deal with it, right? As long as it ties to economic development.
Then he wouldn't be coming in and we'd be up to cities and Lone Rock is presented too, right?
Yeah, yes. Maybe we'll just do that.
Is it the county's responsibility to make sure that, so if Waste Management came back and said, are you using this for is it our responsibility to make sure that the city is using it for that?
Because the ordinance says that it isn't.
We've never reported on it. We've offered
Yeah, I think I think that maybe we could and just add that as a
I mean, it doesn't address, I don't know how the City of Arlington would feel, but I mean we we already did such a program like that, where we did the thought downtown. Is we use money and then we have contracts with developers, so we started grant program with money, we
Was it this money?
It was actually this money because what we did was the City of Condon came in and Arlington came in right after for a different project, but we gave it enough for a big million got this guy got free. And that was to replace old water and sewer pipes. We're saving that money, we use that money, the Waste Management money then at two hundred thousand dollars a year to fund the facility program. And we did that for five years.
Yes. And we don't have an agreement with you on these, I don't think, on this. We just handed the money, right?
It just makes more sense to get it to the entities and everyone, they have different needs. And then we're not in this corner quite much.
Yeah, City of Arlington and City of Condon each, it's budgeted for three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars this year.
For the
For that post fees, so we could just increase that for each entity. We
I mean, if they did order to change, but
We could take care of it the other way now with the, when once we go through all of the steps on the ordinance, we could just amend that for the future. How's that sound?
What do they, I wonder what they usually use the business development line for?
Oh, that's for the Chamber of Commerce.
Oh, okay.
That's the small business grants.
That that's why I'm just wanted to make that point, I guess, that the Chamber already offers that since in fourth small businesses, do they own private?
So what would you do with this?
Well, it doesn't seem like we, it seems like they are doling it out at a certain amount and not just seventy five, I get it. Seventy five, which
Yeah. Yes. I think we I guess, go ahead. Any any thoughts?
I I think we need to send that to the legal counsel, see what they, maybe pose some of the questions that
Yeah.
Ask them. Are we are we opening ourselves up to? And is there a generic?
Are you guys wanting to change the ordinance or are you wanting?
Well, yes, but that's not gonna happen quickly.
Okay, so you guys could vote to just push out two hundred thousand dollars each?
Yeah.
You will need an
Right.
Let's just, let's just do that.
Yeah. And I think, yes, in the future, then we can go back and increase the amounts and not. So, right. And then the other thing is the City of Lone Rock. So we could include um an amount for that.
Yeah, because this, they've lost uh R V spots at the airports. And like I say, time is kind of essence, hopefully getting that property sold and developed there.
Right.
You know, so I don't know, we just
So we can Two hundred thousand for each city and an amount to be determined for the City of Lone Rock. I don't want to do any math right now. That would be an appropriate percentage. That we would earmark for incentivized development. And send the I G A to legal counsel. And then, once we get it back, share it with the City of Condon and see if they're also interested in in that.
You guys want, I mean you guys want to reporting, I mean, I'm all about being accountable for what you get.
Yeah.
I mean, how we spend it on be something, I mean, I, until we get a larger percentage where we don't have to do that. It is up to you guys.
Yeah, I think we should, and it could be included in the I G A.
This kind of says, I guess, the city, it'll go to the city, it can be used for the down payment. And there's, I mean, I don't know, I thought this already went to legal counsel.
So you're saying though that this two hundred thousand needs to go to a developer, it does not need to be used for developing projects?
No, it does. It's, this is to go to the city from us. That's what they're asking. To help incentivize somebody to come develop the property and purchase the property.
So what we were just talking about, I mean, that that would be in, so this extra percentage that you guys do raise it will have to go to the individuals. If city will just be attached to that percentage.
My, what I'm trying to, I I think a lot of this, I would just say increase some of the the money that goes to the cities. And this doesn't come to us. This, the city can do whatever they want with the initial money. That's, that's what I foresee, I would like to see in the future.
In the future.
Yeah, because we spend so much time on some of these grants and then we have the grant committee and thank God for them and and it's like, it just seems like it takes a lot of our time. And like I say, the entities have different needs here.
So, but one, one, a lot of times, once they get I G in place, it's just like the I G A with um the soil conservation. It's it's been in place, it just gets updated and it flows through and they come in and report how they spent the money and yeah. It's not, it's not that big of a deal. I mean
Yeah.
It's it's the getting it set up.
Right. And if we're gonna do it though, before we amend the ordinance, we're just gonna have to do an I G A right now and potentially one with the city, both cities.
Because you've got to go through a process and hearings and to change that. We can't just
Right. So do we want to um?
So I say send this to the um account, the attorney. And then with, and you know, pose some of the questions that Kevin brought up and ask them, you know, if we do this with the other cities that we have in Dillon County with.
Yeah, and we should potentially have this by next meeting. I mean, it seems fairly to me straightforward.
Yeah, to Grant's point, if you need immediately, maybe you can throw in a reverse request, so if they have something that comes along when we speak, can they go on with it?
Yeah.
Might be a work home.
Yeah, I think we should get it to legal counsel to be sure.
We just wanna, we just need to make it happen.
Yeah. The other thing I wonder too is, are they sure there's somebody that doesn't want to just go ahead and develop it? Over that piece of ground? Are we sure that, I mean, have they tried to just go ahead and market it first, but again, I don't want to get in the weeds. I have my own stuff to worry about. Go ahead.
Were you talking about our motel property?
Yeah.
So we are gonna list it for sale, but because there's an O dot easement, it has a thirty day probationary period before we can officially list the properties. We're right now, it ends in August, I believe. Um and then we can, it'll be going on the market and for sale.
Okay, so we'll probably have, yeah.
We have.
We have.
We have a lot.
Right, and you know, get this to legal counsel, get them to review it. And if it, I mean, we've already looked at it. I just didn't want to send it anywhere until I had you had a chance to look at it to be sure we want to pursue this.
Yeah, no, just because of the O dot easement, we had, we can't officially market it until they have a probation to give any objections or comment or concerns.
Right. Okay, so we're gonna send it to legal counsel and come back at the next meeting for potential, potential action. And we'll communicate with the City of Condon as well, so that you have that draft.
Yeah, let's let's develop stuff.
Yeah, let's let's develop, let's put this money to work. The train goes right by this property and that train funds the funds that we're asking to spend the money front. So
Maybe not take anybody down there when the train's doing right by there, right?
I was, I was thinking about the train, because I drove him by, I drove by it the other day. I was like, oh my God. Um Kayla, are you still there?
Yeah.
Kayla Raver?
Yeah.
Can you pass the message that we will be um, you know, what we're doing here, going to legal counsel, we'll consider it at the next meeting if if we possibly can, which would be the second meeting in July, which is the sixteen in Arlington. And um and thank you very much. It was a good discussion on that. That's good, talk things through. I I was thinking about the train and I was thinking the proximity of the train and that property. And there's Cottonwood Street, which would be to the west. And there's multiple houses there, yeah, it's further away. But the train is pretty close to those houses too, and they must get used to it. So
You could, they could build a barrier.
Yeah, right. Okay.
There does have to be an easement between the tracks and whatever we build. So it'll be on the east side of the property, most likely, whatever is built and a parking lot closer to it. Um but yeah, no, we, you get used to it here.
Good, okay.
I kind of like it there, because now I can see who's coming, I drive straight there.
Sorry. It is a nice, you don't have to worry about who's coming.
The trees, yeah.
Uh huh. Um, okay, six point four, discuss employee, employee step increases date, Brooklyn Griffon. Wouldn't, you want to come up?
And I said, um, I told Brooke earlier, I said, thank you for doing all this work on it. I think I stopped, I briefly stopped and talked to her and it's like, I think when they Brooke, like Brooke said, when they originally had anniversary dates and they were doing everything on paper that you know, it was way more of a process. And now it's like basically internet and
Yeah, there'd just be like certain instances, I I guess for history, um the suggestion that we're making is that an employee will receive their step increase when they receive that on their anniversary date. The way it is now is that if an employee meets their step increase mid fiscal year, they have to wait till the beginning of the next fiscal year to receive that step increase. Um so say we have an employee that it was one year, middle of July this year, they have to wait until now, July of twenty twenty six to get that step increase, an eleven month wait. Um I mean, what we're proposing is that they just get that step increase on their anniversary date when when they met that.
When they met it.
I think, as they were saying, uh in the past, we're just, I could see where it could be cumbersome if you were doing things in our, in our past system or having to you know, track fourteen individuals in the upcoming year that are getting their step increase, but with the way that we do our increases now and our salary changes on July one, we will just preenter everybody into the system with a forecasted date to change their payroll. You were saying, I thought that the meeting was there, have to like uh meet and discuss with them, uh the I don't know how you even necessarily, but they didn't have to meet with the full group. So they already will have already signed that away, which we just got yesterday, email that to you guys in the upcoming, that are July sixteen.
Right.
Definitely be a benefit to the new members.
Yeah, and this is something that the new members have um requested in the past. If we do it the way uh working, um, some of those over complicated, so we're on board.
You're on board. Okay, good. And it, will it impact the budget at all?
Uh probably, because when I proposed the budget this year, um they, it was just their step increases that they were getting July one. It'll, you know, the max would be like another two or three thousand dollars in the line item.
Yeah, because some people will be at a disadvantage and some people will be in advantage. Yeah, so we'll just watch it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Shouldn't be too much.
You know, it's not like they're getting, you know, seven step increases, it's just that next step, which is either two percent or five percent.
And I don't think there's that many that are
I think
I know a lot of them are ten year, so.
Thirteen employees that need a needed step increase between July and yesterday and
Okay, thirteen. The, how many?
Sixty nine.
Yeah, sixty nine.
I think we're more than that now, seventy three.
Seventy three. Oh, yes, because the kids that are in the daycare system.
The O I C C grant.
Our, our employees. Yeah, okay. Okay, thanks for doing all the work. Yeah, she did a good job and she got this out quickly.
It's really just an update. I don't, I don't think to approve here, it's just for you guys.
Oh, we're not gonna prove it yet.
Yeah, we'll have a resolution of ending this meeting and then oh, from whom they created, that'll speak to it. Then we'll, it'll be backdated to July one, of course, but
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Brooke.
Okay, um like discussed creation of Wolf Advisory Committee. Um so the legislative session was just ended, uh then it builds seven, seven, seven passed. Um it amends the program. Uh we we look back in history and Commissioner Watkins, you might know something about this. I do think it was before your time that was a committee formed, but it looked like it was not potentially dissolved. Um, yeah, we have, we have wolves knocking on our door, literally. They're all around us. It's probably gonna happen if it hasn't, I don't think we've had a loss, but they're here or on their way here. Um, and I just think
People say they're here.
So we need to um work on this and just wanted, we're still working on the logistics. There's the uh with other counties that have done this to to get it set up. Um but so where is it? Okay, so the statute requires each county have an advisory committee consisting of one county commissioner and Commissioner Watkins said she was interested in that, two mem- members who own or manage livestock. And then two members who support wolf conservation or coexistence with wolves. So we could advertise. I was thinking about our conservation program too, you know what I mean? Um you know, that that's an idea, so you know, our uh and our S S office is involved in conservation, potentially that maybe isn't too far of a reach, but what about this idea? What if we just put out an advertisement of those in interest and just list what we're interested in? You know, the livestock owner, you know, what does the statute say we need to do to fill it? Um and use their words, um and advertise that way and just see who who comes forward with interest.
Yeah.
Would that be fair? Okay.
Yeah, and then we could, uh, what if we have interest, um, at a meeting, we could appoint members at the same time we got bylaws and we do it all at once.
Okay, so bylaws have to be adopted as well, but she has those examples. We could do it all at once. So but we could do the advertising now, get that going, and then appoint the committee and adopt the bylaws at the same time.
Now, does this advisory? Now, does this advisory committee have to meet regularly or just when they're?
Just when there's a, yes.
Weekly.
Yeah, we have, that's when there's an answer.
There's a claim or a reimbursement.
Yeah. Yeah.
I can handle that.
Okay, good. All right, so that's how we're gonna proceed with that announcements. Uh, we have a, our strategic plan calls for a round table once a year. That is happening July eight. What time?
Um, six.
Six P M. Here in the courthouse. Um, that's coming up quickly next week, and then our next meeting, uh, the county court is July sixteenth in Arlington at ten o'clock A M. Um, what else? Um, that, for meetings, that's all I have. Go ahead, Commissioner, welcome.
Um, June nineteenth, Norcore adopted the budget. Um, things are looking a little better there. It's a lot of revenue coming in. Um, of course, just finished county college. Um.
Can I ask about that? How about the transportation funding? Did they talk about that?
Uh, yeah, and then we showed up and, and they killed it that night and, I don't know, it's.
Okay.
Yeah, that was, uh, pretty interesting.
But I understand our fifty, thirty, twenty split is protected, our, our funding, our, our county funding and our, and the city road funding. I think, I was told.
As far as I know right now.
Okay.
But, yeah.
We need to track that, that one, yeah.
Yeah, then I read an article, the mayor of Portland. I don't know, I, I thought they came back this last Tuesday with something. They were trying to, just to do something with it, so.
Okay.
But. Uh.
Jim Wilkins had just sent an email, like, right before the court meeting. Saying, um, Condon is slated to still lose one employee due to the layoff components of the cuts. Mitchell is a joint.
Condon meaning Condon.
A D O T.
O dot, yeah, okay. Yeah.
Wonder where this, where this came out from.
Um, he said, it's Dan Shanahan, our O dot District Nine manager.
Okay.
Stopped by my office today and let me know that it was between Condon and Mopin Sheds to be closed in this district. Even though Condon Shed was what people about him wanted closed down. Dan successfully argued to keep Condon open and shut down Mopin.
Oh, God.
Condon is slated to see, to still lose one employee due to go lay off components of the cuts.
Wow.
Goes on.
Okay, I, I was wondering about that, so that's too bad for Mopin, but, um, we're, the, they're not gonna close it down. One employee, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's what, and it, it adds more.
That's unfortunate, but, oh, okay, all right, thank you, Leah.
So I, um, told Chris earlier, I sat through our triennial review with Delean and we gathered documents, thank you to Brooke for, I know she was on a fire, but she still got a lot of the stuff they needed. And we had to put it in folders and then go on to their site to download all the stuff. So we'll, we'll wait back to see what more documents they might want, but.
Mm hmm.
Um, I just think it's interesting that we're reviewing ourselves, so.
Mm hmm, yeah.
I mean, I can understand reviewing South Gillum Health District and their public health program and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're doing a self audit.
Nobody is actually checking up on me, so.
Yeah, okay. Um, okay, E V charging. We had a meeting yesterday with O dot. O dot's concerned about their stepping too for the E V charging people that are working on this, this grant. So the background is that, um, oh. Miranda Reese, when she was working here, worked on this grant application, so it's been a long time. And so, uh, the total grant award is nine hundred and twenty-five thousand approximately dollars, almost a million dollars. Um, and it would be for two level two chargers and one level three charger with two clubs. Level three is the fast, fast chargers. They're expensive, but they're the ones, if you're gonna do it, you want. Um, and then, um. The meeting we had, and, and some of this, I don't know the original vision because I wasn't here, but that O dot will deliver the project on behalf of the county. Um, we're going to be looking into that if there's an option to the county delivering the project and just receiving the O dot funds. Um, there are gonna be a lot of considerations if we look into that, but the problem is the agreement, if, if they deliver the services, they have ten years to do this. And it's, there is a timeline, it's just we don't have any control over how long it might take them to complete this. Um, I don't know if there's flexibility there or not. We're gonna ask the question. But the plan, um, is that in fall of twenty twenty seven, construction would start if O dot delivers the project. Um, so it's gonna be, it's gonna be a long time before we'll have it with this grant.
So meanwhile, did we, did we do an outside charger up at the bus farm?
Okay, it's in the plan, but it wasn't in the, it wasn't in the grant. So that would be, that, I guess that's an option I have for you, is, um, do you know anything about that? Idea, Gillum County would be paying for that as an extra, and that would be a level two or maybe two level twos, I think.
I think, cuz I think we originally discussed, cuz those are the, the cheaper ones, right?
Mm hmm.
Not cheap, but.
Right.
Less expensive.
Um, are we wanting to do all of it? And maybe that's not a question for today. Um, and these can be added. There's gonna be space, it's gonna be there, it's just they're not gonna be put in right now as part of the project. I don't need. So they, they take, I've heard people say they take from four hours to ten hours depending to charge.
Cuz there's nothing here.
But I don't, I don't.
There's one, there's one at Columbia Basin, and they sit there for a long time.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
They usually have their best.
Yeah. The, the thing is, how long are we gonna wait? I'm just, a lot of things are going through my head about this.
How much? The funding though, too.
Well, okay, so there's two phases to this. There's the, um, preliminary engineering phase, and then there's the construction phase. The preliminary engineering phase, um, would go up until construction starts, it could. And that's already obligated. We have that money secure. Um, there didn't seem to be a lot of concern about the construction phase money. It would just need to be later obligated. O dot's most concerned about people, the jobs of the people who are trying to run these programs locally here. Um, they don't seem super concerned about the money being available later, but it's, then, then you're, you're talking to one person and then all of a sudden they're not responding to your emails anymore. This has happened already with this for us. And then you have a new person who isn't up to speed and, you know, that's just the way it's gonna be.
I would have thought they already had that lined out.
No, no, and they're not.
Really, remember we were like, right in the middle of an election cycle too that.
Yes.
Changed everything. I mean, it was like, we, we were cooking along on it and then all of a sudden it was like.
Right, and then also, um, O dot isn't used to running a program like this. It's new for them as well.
Mm hmm.
So, you know, we would reach out all last, you know, multiple times last year and just couldn't get any answers on where we were at. So, yeah, so we're, um. I think we need to ask the questions. We need to ask, is there a way for Gillum County to deliver the services? And if we did, I know there's stringent reporting requirements, and I think there's reasons why O dot does it, but I just need to know what those reasons are so we could speed this up, maybe. But today, I, I found out that, that there was, they were, a lot was gonna be paid. And if we stopped that, we didn't know about it until, like.
Oh, they were not. Yeah, they were thinking during the concrete out this morning.
But, so then I got, I, I got a phone call and I said, whoa, we can't, I don't think we can disturb the ground on that. We don't want to jeopardize this grant and, but it's okay to take the concrete out. So that can be done, and I understand they're probably trying to just to make it look nicer, but if we're not gonna do anything with it, we need to be talking about, we need to be talking about what we're gonna do with the, um, Gillum County's property.
Isn't thinking originally, they got the plans of the little park and then.
We talked about that too, and that will be part of this as well. We talked about that part of the landscaping. Um, which, yeah, we talked about what would be the easiest maintenance and how to go, go about that, so.
Public restrooms.
Mm hmm, yeah.
That's a big thing.
Mm hmm, that's true, it is.
They have a lot of time there.
So I'll report back.
Well, I think I thought was that the people would go down, down and.
Yeah.
While they were.
Yeah.
Charging.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there, I, I can't speak for the city, but I think the bathroom in there is a public bathroom.
I think it is too.
Probably in the library too.
Okay, okay, fiber project. As you heard from our fiber consultant, that the project significantly scaled back because of the federal government. Um, but it, it looks like we may have an application window for the, for the fiber on the scaled back project. Um, sometime in July, it's gonna be a very short timeline and we'll be scrambling, I think, a little bit to get, get him the information he needs. But, um, we're gonna go ahead and apply, yeah, and just see where, see where it lands. Our match is gonna be a lot less, but, um, yeah, and then I think we need to, in the future, look at potentially some use in our economic enhancement ordinance of figuring out some way to come up with getting fiber to the rest of the county, and then we're gonna need to talk about how are we gonna do it? Are we just gonna do those homes that make sense? Make sense, you know, there's very, very expensive connections because of distance. Um, but the good thing is we already have the poll agreements with Columbia Basin on the South County and also Pacific Power. Um, that we can still use that agreement. It isn't tied to the grant, so we can, uh, maybe get some services, but we need to have a consultant tell us this is how much it's gonna cost. If we do it by region, like, say you do the Clem area or you do Mayville, what's it gonna cost? And we want to come up with like a cost share. Okay, if you put in this amount of money, Gillum County will help you with this amount. And then there's gonna be those hard to reach areas that you just aren't gonna do.
Portion in the South County though, isn't it, that's getting left out of it? Um, because Raleigh has to.
Yeah, they can't do any of, of South Gillum County.
Yeah.
It's all, it's all Michael O'North.
There's a, is there a little portion in the South that is?
Uh, no.
Thinking there's a little.
Because Raleigh applied for and received that grant, it disqualifies South County rural from, from the bean funding.
Then I wonder, is it, is it, maybe I'm mistaken, but I thought there was like a portion that like lies over there by, uh, Morrell County.
Oh, yes.
That is in Gillum County, South County, but it's gonna get taken care of by.
Yes.
Them.
Yes, that's my understanding, yes, and he's not here. So I just was giving a little, a little bit of an update, but just try to think about, um, you know, our strategic plan says, you know, fiber, early education, um, housing, how are we gonna address those things and really think about ways to do it? So. Um, anything else that I missed on you that we worked on?
Okay, um, I just wanted to check with Commissioner Watkins. I didn't know, like, with the Citizens Advisory Committee, if, if you wanted to give me that or have me take that role or, cuz I know you've taken a lot. Okay, all right, I was just, I know you've taken a lot, so, I'll just start about that.
I go down there. I, I, I think I've toured, like, maybe five times since I've been on the county court.
We're working on the agreement and we're work, the planning department's working on the, um, conditional use permit. Um, approval, because December's the day, so working on that, that's. There is that Oregon Business Commission is meeting in Pendleton on July eleventh to, uh, review, hopefully approve Alvin Grids, um, SIP agreement. So it has to go through them as well. Um, so I'm gonna go to that meeting to just see what that's all about.
So when we were on our last tour down there, um, Rich Harbor asked a question if, uh, how long would the gas be produced down there? And the, um, Paul said forever, so. And I, I didn't know if we would, are we potentially gonna have, um, an agreement for a portion of that?
I think it should be.
Going forward? What, once they get that, I'm going.
You're talking revenue from the gas.
The gas.
Yeah.
Yeah. Cuz that's, I mean, that, when he said that, you know, it'd be forever, it's gonna create methane gas.
Yeah.
For eternity, even.
Yeah.
Once landfill is actually closed.
Something to look into. I don't think it.
It needs to be. This agreement. To ask a question.
Yeah.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
Cuz it's, um, I, I'm sure they spent a lot of money on, uh, those buildings.
Mm hmm.
They said they're, they're closed right now. They said maybe the next time we go down and tour, we would be able to go in and, and look inside the buildings. Yeah, actually, themselves.
Right. You want to engineer a park of boxcars? Oh, yeah, I had the park, uh, city park, um, last night, um, just to make, you know, the county available. If you guys want to take a, take a turn, that's fine too, or, um, just to be accessible to the public outside of the building if people don't want to come in here. Um, I had one person show up and we had a great conversation, um, and I go to the park. You know, I, so it was last night, uh, July first in the park at five o'clock in Condon. And then I'll do July third at five o'clock in the park in Arlington.
Well, hopefully it'll cooler.
Mm hmm, yeah.
On the third, cuz staying hot down there in R and D.
So, yeah, that's what I have. Anything else?
We're just gonna come forward with the expectations for the childcare.
Um, so. How do you want to go about that? Um, do you want to, since you're the liaison for the, for the childcare, that's part of the grant agreement. Do you want them to come here or do you want to communicate with them directly and report back? It's up to you.
Um, I don't know, which you guys prefer, Carrie?
Probably that best.
Okay. Okay.
So you have board meetings, right?
Mm hmm.
Okay, I mean, would a board meeting be appropriate or?
We can do a special session after, you know, if we want a board meeting.
I don't know, just a thought.
Okay, um. Yeah, why don't I, I'll reach out to you or Haley and see if we can get something scheduled.
Our next board meeting is July twenty second.
July.
Okay.
That would be great.
July twenties.
What time Carrie?
So how's the construction going?
It's going, their foundation.
Uh huh.
I haven't drove up by there. We had to take a drive by.
We, there, there was a lot of excitement. There was some broad daylight word, like, everybody was like, I thought I came in.
Oh, no.
Oh, little hands or big hands?
We're gonna have to have this.
Oh, good. How, how's your, um, additional funding going? Um, your, uh, for the rest of your construction?
Uh, well, we did not get funding because I got rid of the business organ, so there's still a very final round. We're maybe changing, looking at the, the scoring river to see what they can improve on to get past that first phase. Um, of the scoring, including the second phase, which was very high in since. So, um, we're still seeking funding from our family foundation. We've got some Kennedy members deployed on like fifty rentals that have died to boost community investments.
Mm hmm.
Are important.
Oh, yeah.
And, um, the new childcare director or board chairman are in their last board meeting. Two days of collaborations on.
Oh, yeah, that's a great idea. Good. They used to do a, didn't they do a golf tournament for Arlington? Yeah. Uh huh.
Yeah, you'd need to have like a two day tournament. They golf one day in Arlington, one day in Condon. And they.
Hmm. Oh, great.
Yeah, you kind of hand them stuff that they can just grab and go. It's been my experience. It's been my experience.
The fact of the, beautiful idea of the fundraiser.
Yeah, that would be great.
And your fundraising that you've done for the International Club, wow. Yeah, I'm sure you can.
Fireworks.
Help them a lot, cause you guys are, you're out there scrawling.
Alan, yeah.
It's good.
So our Formula Rodeo is Saturday.
Okay.
If we're gonna have announcements.
Good.
International Club is serving.
And the International Club is doing concessions, so that I think, oh, I, last year, we actually had a fairly good crowd in the stands, so.
Good.
Yeah.
What time?
It's, um, the Formula Rodeo, well, it's at noon and one. It was supposed to be eleven and noon, but. So we'll actually be there signing people up at eleven, case the, that.
I'll be in the parade. Well, Joe and I will be in the parade and I bought six hundred otter pops, six, yeah, six hundred otter pops to throw out, so for Gillum County.
I was like, I only bought four bags of candy and I was downstairs and, uh, Todd had two cases. I was like, oh.
I saw that. Yeah, okay. If there's no further business, this meeting is adjourned.